Just gonna, no gavel, so we'll do the knock. Welcome. I'd like to open the town council work session. The date is Thursday, February 27th, and the time is 6:35. And if we could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight on our agenda, we have discussion of the fiscal year 2012-13 audit, and discussion of the water rates and billing system, and then obviously always other matters of interest. So, in order to start, I believe we're going to start with the water rates and the billing system, and at this time, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred.
Yeah, I'd like to just indicate everything that's at your seat this evening. I've given you a copy of the municipal budget, which is part of the manager's report for this week. We're not dealing with that until next week, but there will be a quiz sometime over the weekend. I wanted to do the water rate study first, and prior to getting into the water rate study, I wanted to give you two items. One is a sheet that I left at the table, which is understanding water consumption, because I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of how we were dealing with measurements of water, and how a cubic foot of water equals gallonage. And one cubic foot equals 7.48 gallons. So, under the existing minimum for our water system, we allow up to 5,000 cubic feet. That 5,000 cubic feet means that with the base fee, people are receiving over the course of the 12 months, 37,400 gallons. With the rate structure that's been proposed in the document that we'll discuss this evening, it's proposed to maintain the 5,000 cubic feet, but to measure that in quarterly increments. So, with a quarterly increment, it would mean that instead of getting 5,000 cubic feet for the year, you'd get 1,250 cubic feet, or 9,350 gallons for every three months. And that works out to 103.8 gallons per day that are within the base fee itself. Now, again, the difference here, which can be a substantive difference, is the fact that if someone is living here for only three months of the summer, and uses 5,000 cubic feet during that time, under the new rating structure, they would be paying on excess after the first 1,250 cubic feet were used. And we're going to get through the discussion on why you would change that type of a system, but I wanted to make sure council understood how we do measurements of water, and what the implication is in terms of conversion to a gallonage perspective. The second sheet that I provided you is looking at the prior year's actual billing for our water system. And the reason I gave that to you is so that you can see that of the 2,763 accounts that we have, 1,716 of those use less than 5,000 cubic feet a year. What that really points out is the fact that particularly South Shore, water system is a seasonally impacted water system. So, again, 63% of all of your client base within that system are using less than the 5,000. And in fact, when you look at the individual numbers, there's 328 that are using less than 1,000 cubic feet. There's another 432 customers that are using less than 2,000, and another 367 under the three. So, you can see that as we get up into the plus 10,000 cubic feet usages, you have a much smaller number of individual accounts that are going to be paying any type of excess, whether it's on a single-phase system, or whether it's on a system that's for two consumption rates based on a flat amount, a base amount, and then an excess amount. So, with that, I want to, I think everybody's had a chance to meet Doug Gardner. Doug is the president of the Pioneer Consulting Group, which the council awarded contract to last year for the preparation of an independent evaluation of our water system rate structure, and also to bring the rate program that we use in South Kingston into compliance with state statute. And as I've mentioned to the council on several occasions, getting into compliance with state statute means that we are going to be required to go to a quarterly billing system, rather than a semi-annual billing system that we have used in the past. We would send out one bill, it would have two separate payments. Now, we're going to be going to a quarterly billing system. There is an implication that has to be addressed if we go to a quarterly billing system, and that is, how do we deal with the excess water that is billed in the rears on a yearly basis that will no longer be billed in the rears but on a current base? What I mean by that is that the water that was consumed between July 1st of 2012 and July, and June 30th of 2013, traditionally would be billed in October of 2014. So, you're actually collecting based on what people used in the prior 12 months. That billing is about $160,000 a year, and it would go to a small portion of the client base that we have, obviously because 62% have no excess at all. And a good portion of those that are receiving a small excess bill are required to pay it within 30 days of that bill. What we are proposing to do is to set up a quarterly billing system where the prior three months of actual water consumption will be billed for that quarter. So, we will go from July 1st of 2014 through September 30th of 2014, and send out a bill on October 15th. On October 15th, it will have the first billing for the 1,250 cubic feet that people use between July and the end of September. Since we're no longer billing in the rears, we need to collect that $160,000 at one time upfront. What we're proposing to do is to have that billing occur on July 15th of 2014, where we would bill on July 15th, giving a 30-day notice for payment. That's the same bill that we would have submitted on October 15th, asking for a 30-day payment. So, they're getting that bill three months in advance. They've got 30 days to pay it, just as they would if it was in October. But from there forward, they'll be on a current-year basis, they'll be billed on the prior three months of consumption. One of the reasons water systems are looking to have consumption billed at the time that it's actually being used, or really in the rears by three months, is so that people will have a better understanding of what their water usage is, and hopefully will begin to provide conservation in terms of water use. It will also provide a great deal of influence as far as how people use outside water. Irrigation will become much more expensive if, in fact, people are going to continue to use it in the manner which they have in the past. If someone was only going to use the 5,000 cubic feet, and was only using a portion of that during the summer months, they could continue to use exterior water use, and not have any thoughts of it, because whether you used 2,000 cubic feet, or 10, or 5,000, you were still paying exactly the same amount. So, with that as a general introduction, because Doug's study doesn't look at the payment in the rears of what we would need to build, bill out in July, his only looks prospectively on what the billing structure would be. The last caveat I would put out before I turn it over to Doug, is that his study is an independent evaluation of what he believes we will need, based on his analysis of our budget and the amount of consumption that's occurring within the water systems. There are two issues that will influence whether or not, from a staff perspective, we support the rate increase to the level that's being proposed for consideration this evening. One is the level of approval provided by the PUC for United Water. In the budget that we're preparing, we've assumed a 30% increase in the cost of water. They've asked for a 43% increase. So, we've assumed that PUC, if they give them 30%, we will be spending approximately $50,000 to $55,000 more than we did in the current year, to be able to acquire the wholesale water to be distributed in our two water systems. Second item of concern is that council approved a water quality study last year. That study is underway, which will evaluate the necessity for the installation of different types of equipment that may be necessary to be able to improve the quality of the water based on what state standard requirements may be. In the capital budget, we had looked at that as much as an $80,000 expenditure. If that isn't a requirement, and if the PUC does not grant that large of a rate increase, there may be consideration for the council in advance of setting the rates for the water system in late May or early June, for less than what Doug's presentation will suggest would be appropriate, because we want to look at it and make sure that we're not going to generate revenue in excess of what we need. But at the same time, we're not looking to have the rates low where the revenue intake is such that we're going to need to raise rates on a year-to-year basis. So, we're trying to do a fine balancing act. The first step of the evaluation should be to have the independent review made, for him to tell you what he thinks you need, for you to be able to make your evaluation as to what you're willing to assume you need. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Doug, and let him walk you through his study in terms of the concept of conservation, rate structures, and how to discourage water use. One of the other things I wanted to mention is that I would like to use the July billing period as a means of warning people that consumption is going to have costs affiliated with it. And what I mean by that is when we send out the excess bill, I want to be able to put a package together that goes out to all of our customers, that tells them how they can conserve water, and things that they can do to be able to potentially reduce what their water budget will be. So, we can use that billing at a time when the people that are getting the excess billing, as well as to send a postcard, if necessary, to those that are not getting access, to explain what are the conservation efforts that can be made in the house, what are the different things that can be accomplished. And I also want to lead by example, because one of the largest water customers on the South Shore water system is the town of South Kingston. And it is the water that's used for irrigation purposes at Sukittas Playfields. And that's something that needs to be evaluated in terms of what the cost would be for either putting a well in place, or whether or not the irrigation is a necessity based on the conditions that exist on a year-to-year basis. So, I think that there's a number of things that we can do. One other thing I will point out, is that Water Resources Board, at this point, is spending more and more time looking at coming up with a statewide policy that will look at what water resource availability is in the different regions. One of those being the, in the South Kingston, Charleston, Richmond area, and looking at what the summer stream rates are, and the potential to try to allocate future water use, or to reduce existing water use. All of this is coming because as the population increases, and particularly seasonal population increases, what we're seeing is a demand in three months of the year, where we have to provide the infrastructure and staffing to be able to accommodate that three months over a 12-month period, even though there's little use. So, if we can control the activities in the summer, and reduce the consumption during those months, it will provide cost efficiencies for us in the future. So, with that, as a general introduction, I'd turn it over to Doug Gardner.
Steve, I just want to make sure that there's no questions here at the table before Doug starts, and that was a thorough presentation, and thank you for that introduction. Carol?
Steve, just for clarification, I mean, on the quarterly billing, for, people are going to be billed for the 1,250 square feet, or 9,350 gallons, but in the summer months, say from July to September, would you get, that would be everyone's excess use. Everybody would be up, even if you, even if you never go over the 5,000 per year, you're probably more, your largest consumption would be in the summer anyway.
Well, again, that's why I gave you that sheet.
Would you get billed for the excess that quarter, or would you get it at the end of the year?
No, you would get it for that quarter.
But you might make up for it on the other quarters, right? So, you'd still be, you still wouldn't be, if you never used for the whole year over 5,000 cubic feet, then you would never pay the excess.
That's correct. If you never go over 1,250 in a quarter, you don't pay any excess at all.
But if you go over 1,250 in a quarter, but you don't go over 5,000 in a year, do you still pay the excess?
You pay the excess every time you go over the 1,250.
Oh.
See, that's what I didn't get.
Built on quarterly now versus the year.
This second sheet, right?
Because of that law, Carol, that they, you know, are up 80%.
Good question, didn't understand that. Thank you.
I didn't understand that. I thought you were going to bill four times at the 1,250, and then at the end of the year, if you went over the 5,000, you'd get it then.
No.
So, I mean, but it's logical that everybody's using most of their water in the summer. It's logical.
What you're going to see is that in the October billing, if the most water is used during that prior three-month period, most of the excess billing will be during that period. But, again, when you look at the number of customers that you have on that sheet that I gave you, that use less than 2,000 cubic feet, you've got almost 700 of those that are using less than 2,000 cubic feet for the entire 12-month period. But yes, Carol, the objective of conservation billing is the fact that people are given a unit value, and if they exceed that, they're going to, they're going to pay for the excess water. But, so, that, you are reading it right.
You know, most, you're showing that most of the residents use less than 5,000 cubic feet per year.
Correct.
But, that doesn't necessarily mean you won't go over that 1,250 on those key summer months.
That's correct. But again, if you're, if you're looking to come up with a target number of how much revenue you need to raise, you're going to raise that revenue either in your base rate, or you're going to raise it in your consumption rate. The objective is to have a consumption rate which is going to have people consider whether or not their prior three months of water use is something they need to continue for the next three months, or the next three months.
So, people are going to be taken by surprise by this, in a way. They're going to get this bill, and they're going to see, oh, I just went through the summer, and now I got a high bill. And then I've got to look, look back and see how I can conserve for next year, right?
Yes, but they can, I guess that's one way of looking at it. I think that the problem that exists right now is that when you give somebody 5,000 cubic feet, then there's no reason for them not to use the entire 5,000 during the summer months, and that's when it's overtaxing the system. That's when we have the demand where we can't keep the tanks full. What we're attempting to do is to reduce the consumption by having people pay based on the fact that that's when, that the volume demands are during that quarter.
And Steve, this is based on the water increase, was it 43%?
This is based, the projection that's been used here is a 30% increase in the water. If the 43% goes up, we're going to have to look at additional adjustments.
So, if we left it the way that it was, the town would get hit with that extra exorbitant amount, or, you know, the water uses?
One way or the other, you're looking at probably $100,000 that you have to raise additional.
Right.
To be able to accommodate what your future needs are going to be. And you also have to satisfy the requirements for conservation purposes with the state regulations and the quarterly billing. So, there's a number of things that are going on here that, that just hit, it would have been a much easier time for us to change the methodology, which isn't dissimilar from what Charleston, what Narragansett's doing, or United Water is doing. And I think if you give Doug an opportunity, he can explain to you the different, that what we're doing is atypical to what billing systems are for water, because the problem is, people are no longer, people look at water not as a commodity, and it is one. And it's becoming much more expensive for us to be able to get that water to the public. So...
Yeah, the only question that I had before Doug starts, my apologies. Will this tie into our new software programs that we have?
Tie into what programs?
Our new software programs.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can I just ask one more thing?
Yeah, Carol, and then Meg.
I, you know, I keep going back to these summer months. I mean, couldn't we allow, because it looks like on paper, what you've handed us tonight, that, you know, it's almost the same, we're only going to bill quarterly. So, it used to be 5,000 cubic feet per year per household, basically, and now it's going to be 1,250 cubic feet per quarter, which equals the same. But in reality, we all use more water in the summer months, from July to September. So, my view would be to increase the amount you would allow, allocate for those months. Maybe, you know, obviously, we don't want everybody using the 5,000 cubic feet in the, in the summer months, but we should give them a little more than the 1,250, because everyone's going to have to pay excess. I mean, and we know that's the case.
Okay, but then what you've got to do is you have to look at what the, what the cost of excess is. The cost of excess for the first, for the first measure over the 1,250 feet, is going to be, right now, we charge excess at $2.97. The excess rate that's in this rate study is at $3.25. So, and that's $3.25 for every 100 cubic feet of water. So, yes, somebody's going to use excess, but, you know, you're looking at this as being a large dollar amount, where it depends on the amount that somebody's using. If they've got 1,000 cubic feet, let's say they use 1,250, and they use an extra 1,000 on top of that, then you multiply that at 100 times the $3.25, which would get you a bill of, what, $30, about $32. So, it, we're not talking in an exorbitant amount of money. What we're looking at, though, is the resource that's being taxed during that summer month, because if we give them the excess in the summer months, we don't have a lot of excess for the rest of the year, then we have no conservation effort, and there's no reason for somebody to cut back on water use if they can.
Okay, Meg?
I don't want to be a crab apple here, but I do have a question. John, we talked about this, actually, quite some time ago. In terms of the water usage, we sat here at a meeting, and there was water usage that was, I guess, considered residual runoff, that we didn't know where it was going, if you will. And so, the town was, I may be wrong, but the town was paying for water that we did not know where it was going. Have we come to any type of resolve on that?
Yes, it's called unaccounted-for water. We know how much we purchase from United, and how much we sell through the meters in that delta is the unaccounted-for water. We're now focusing in, because all our customers are metered, and we read them every month. So, we're now focused in on, we believe it's maybe the wholesale meters, so we're trying to focus in on those at that point, and determine their level of accuracy. I think with our system, although it's relatively young as compared to, let's say, Providence or Pawtucket, but we, if we had a number of leaks, we would see those. And we're not seeing, you know, you're not driving down the road seeing, you know, puddles of water. We do occasionally have leaks, and we do fix them. So, we're trying to focus in now on the wholesale meter connections, to see if that's the culprit or not.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Jim?
Yeah, Steve, the 30%, the assumption we're using versus the 43%, that applies to Kingston Water, too, United Water, everyone throughout the state.
John, you have a...
Whatever the PUC comes up with.
I think I ran the page, and I didn't bring it in. We took a look at what United charges are right now, Jim, and, you got it there? United, right now, has a $96.04 rate, and they charge $2.27 for the first step, which is under 9,600 cubic feet. And excess is then at $2.85.
And they charge for every cubic foot you use. They don't provide a minimum in advance. You get the flat admin fee, plus you're charged the $2.27 for every cubic foot you use. And that, and the rates are going, as it stands with their proposed rate increase, the flat admin fee is $1.37, up from $96. And the excess, or the consumption rate, would go from $2.27 to $3.10.
So much, but, so, United customers, it's possible, then, if you only use 500 cubic feet, that's what you're charged for, or they have a minimum?
They have, they have no minimum advance. You get charged for every cubic foot that you use.
Just what you use.
Yes, or at least with us, you get the allowance of the 1,200, or proposed in the 1,250 cubic feet.
When we tried to compare the quarterly billing, right now, their bill would be $209 under their existing rate, if somebody were using 1,250 cubic feet. Their proposed rate increase, and that's the 43%, would take it up to $293. Our rate right now is $178, and our rate would jump to $192 with no excess. So, we're still well below where they would be. Kingston, for the same volume of water, is $400. Narragansett would be at $2.80. So, we are low in relation to the other, other utilities, but I think that the real, the real problem is during the summer months, because we've got plenty of water available for three quarters of the year. It's the summer months that are the issue. So, what we're attempting to do with conservation rating is provide a means of reducing what that, that consumption level is. What we're also doing is looking to have the base rate go from the $178 to the $192, so that there's guaranteed money. In other words, let's say that the people cut down their consumption by 50%. You're going to lose all that revenue, so what we want to do is to have a guaranteed billable, which is in the base rate, which is the 178 going to $192. So, there's a number of balls that you've got to keep up in the air, and whether it's meeting state regulation, whether it's meeting what system needs are based on resource allocation, or whether it's the revenue structure that you're trying to input. All of those things impact one another.
All right, last question, then. Will the state dictate to us whether we can make up deficiencies with just charging more per cubic foot, or are we going to be under the gun on conservation basis, or is there a combination?
As a municipality, we're not governed by the state as far as the rate structure we put in. If it was a private entity like United Water, would have to go through Public Utilities Commission. But I'll preface it, Jim, by saying, today, there's no requirement. But the Water Resources Board, I think, is looking to institute regulations that would require that. What we're trying to do is to, is to put in a system that is quite similar to what other water systems are using, and also be able to recover the revenue that we need to be able to keep the system whole.
Okay. Doug, thanks for your patience.
Oh, no problem, thank you. My name is Doug Gardner. I know I had a chance to meet some of you, so those I did not...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, evening. I like to keep things pretty open forum, so if you have a question, you can either hold them to the end, or you can ask me as I'm proceeding. It's really up to you. I'm easy, you know, just however you wanna handle it is fine with me.
Okay, we usually jump in.
Okay, hey, no problem. So I was hired by the, the town maybe, probably what, four or five months ago? And to, to give an independent overview of your water rates and make recommendations that will recover the amount of revenue you need to run the department, not only today, but several years out. We looked at, we took your current budget, we projected out salaries in your O and M expense, and as Steve mentioned earlier, the rather potentially large rate increase from United. We looked at your capital items, we looked at your depreciation, and built what we call the revenue requirements. And essentially, that means how much revy, revenue you need to generate per year moving forwards. And there are a lot of, there are a lot of factors that impact rates. Budgets, consumption, those are really the big two. So I don't know about you, but all my other clients, their budgets are going up, they're not going down. And water's becoming more and more expensive every year. Whether you purchase it from somebody like United, or if you draw it from the ground and you treat it yourself, the distribution costs are higher, personnel costs are higher, debt ser, you don't have any debt service, which, which is one reason your rates are lower than many other communities. But the costs are increasing. So, and then you have the state, which is, you know, I guess for lack of a better term, mandating certain requirements to your, to your water and sewer system regarding billing. A, they want you to move to quarterly billing. And then there's the other general law that establishes targets and methods for efficient water use. And by efficient water use, they mean conservation. You know, water is a commodity. And in the old days, water wasn't that expensive. It came out of the ground, you treated it a little bit, you sent it to your customers. It was a relatively inexpensive item. But as there are more and more regulations, there, there are greater treatment costs, all the other costs involved, water's become very expensive. So what, what the state is looking for is for the town to move to the quarterly billing. And I'll focus on that a little bit, but more importantly, they want you to move to a conservation-based rate. And by a conservation-based rate, that means, in layman's terms, the more you use, the more you're gonna pay. So I don't really wanna get into the history of the water system. You, you probably already know that, you know, there are two systems, roughly twenty-eight hundred services. But what really drives your rates and what, you know, there was a little discussion at the beginning about the, moving to the quarterly, and then most people will exceed that twelve hundred cubic feet, twelve hundred and fifty cubic feet. These rates are designed, I don't wanna say for that reason, but to account for that, because they want you to conserve. So if you're gonna use more water in the summer, they want you, it, the rates are designed that either you conserve or you're gonna pay more. Because what's happening is, you know, you're, you have a relatively, you know, small year-round community, but then come, you know, June first, May first, July first, you have this huge influx of people in outside irrigation. So when that happens, you're forced to maintain a larger water system, water distribution system. Whereas if you have relatively stable water consumption all year, you may only need a twelve-inch pipe that runs down Main Street. But because you have a large seasonal population, you, that may force you to move to a twenty-four-inch pipe running down Main Street, because you have to meet the maximum day demand that the customers require. You have fire protection costs, there has to be a certain gallonage to fight a fire. So all these factors are really forcing and requiring the town to have greater facilities. And those greater facilities, you know, cost more to operate on a daily basis. So the rates are really designed to recover those costs based on the requirements placed upon you by your customers. Now, a word, couple words you're gonna hear me say throughout the process, through the presentation tonight, are fair and equitable. The rates are designed to be fair to all ratepayers, and they're designed to be, there's equity built into it. These rates will recover all the costs of your budget, they'll strengthen the enterprise funds, it's not gonna put you in a precarious financial situation. It's gonna ensure that you have enough money to meet your obligations on a daily, weekly, monthly, and yearly basis. So, do you want me to go through each page of the report and talk about the recommendations? I mean, how do you wanna handle that? Are you looking for a general overview? I don't know if you've had a chance to read the report.
What do we need to do? What do we need to do?
Okay.
What do we tell our folks out there?
Well, you need to move to a, you need to move to a conservation-based rate. Right now, you have a single-step rate, that you allow the five thousand cubic feet on an annual basis, and this is all on page six of my report. You allow five thousand cubic feet annually. And Counselor, I can't see what your last name is, Counselor Carol McIntyre, okay, thank you. You're, you hit the nail on the head when you said, you know, by allowing twelve hundred and fifty cubic feet per quarter, that some people may not use the full five thousand cubic feet in a year, but they will see an excess. And that's the base, that's the fair and equitable rates. They're placing a greater demand on the system, so therefore, because they're using more, they have to pay more.
But only in that particular period.
But only in that particular period.
Now, when they use less than twelve fifty in another quarterly billing period, they're not gonna see a reduction.
They will not.
They're gonna pay the flat fee.
They'll get the flat fee.
That's, that's where I lose you on the fair part.
Okay.
Because I think if we're going to do actual use billing, it should be actual use. We're gonna do actual use in those high summer months, but in the winter, when you're only using five hundred of thousands cubic feet, which I don't know what people usually go through, but you're not gonna see, your bill isn't gonna go down because of that.
You would be, if, if, if we took that philosophy, in my opinion, you'd be defeating the purpose of having a two-step rate. And you would be punishing people who use more than five thousand cubic feet on an annual basis?
Isn't that what we already do? I mean, you, you charge more, is that called punishment? If you wanna use more and pay for it, that, that's your right to do.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
I mean, hopefully, you wanna conserve and you understand that, you know, water is like gold now, but...
It's, it's not quite that bad, but it is, it's, it's like silver, let's say.
Yeah.
But it's heading towards platinum, really, very quickly. But I understand your concern, and we do hear that. You know, when you move from a rate structure like you have now, where you only spill the excess once a year, and you move to a quarterly basis, you know, it does tend to send some shockwaves through the community, because people, people's bills will change radically. Now, Steve talked about some of the benefits of moving to quarterly billing. One of the main benefits, in my opinion, is leaks are gonna be detected much quicker. Right now, if you have a leak on your property, you may not discover that leak until your bill comes out a year later, because you bill a year in arrears. By going to quarterly billing, you're gonna detect leaks a little bit earlier, and what's gonna happen is, you're gonna reduce that unaccounted-for water rate that John mentioned a little bit ago.
Yes, I asked that question, because we had talked about that earlier, yes.
Yeah, so if somebody has a leak within their house, like the toilet leaks, or they leave the hose on, or they have an irrigation system that leaking, you know, normally, they'd have to wait a year before, and they'd get a, a massive bill. Now, you'll see that in ninety days, as opposed to three hundred and sixty-five.
I'm just thinking, like, say you have, you have a beach cottage that you open for three months a year. Okay? I turn the electricity on, and at the end of the season, I turn it off. I don't get charged for that. I get charged for what I've used. It seems like this is what get in charge, they're getting charged for something they don't use.
Well, the minimum charge is really designed to recover those ongoing costs that are throughout the year. You have billing costs, you have personnel costs, you have infrastructure costs, you have maintenance costs. There's a lot of, you know, there's tremendous amount of money it takes to, to keep that going.
But don't other utilities have these same inherent costs?
I can't speak to that, I can always...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious about that. I was like, you know, as somebody who owned a summer cottage, which were, basically were open from, you know, three, four months a year, and they would take the water meter out of the ground.
Take it out of the house.
Take it, gone, it's gone. So it's like, we weren't using any water, 'cause there's no way the water could get into the house.
But they don't shut the main off that runs by your house. You still have the main there, you still have treatment costs, the water still has to flow. You may not be purchasing as much water, but the costs are still there.
No, we're not purchasing any water.
There's still fire protection charges, that if there's, you know, God forbid, there's a fire at one of those cottages, you need to have the fire flow. That's all built into the minimum charge, so that, you know, if it's needed, the cost, it's paid for and the water's there. So even though you do pull your meter, there's still costs associated with that.
Just like the police department, you may go the full year without using the police at all.
Yeah, that's true.
But you've got to have the infrastructure in place to respond if in fact you need that, EMS. Water is the same thing, you know? And, and again, I, I think the main concern people are having is what happens during that summer month. Again, look at what the rate structure would be. That second thousand cubic feet over the twelve hundred and fifty is a bill of thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. It's not, you know, so let's say that the person, instead of using twelve fifty, used twenty-two fifty. On an annualized basis, that would be over ten thousand cubic feet. But what I'm saying to you is that that person uses the two thousand one hundred and twenty-five feet.
In the summer.
They get the bill in October, that extra thousand. They get a, they get a bill, which is gonna be their one-fourth of the hundred and ninety-two dollars, forty-eight dollars. And they're going to get a second bill that's gonna be for thirty dollars and twenty-five cents. That's, that's what we're talking about. But what we're also talking about is, that person gets that bill, and they have to decide whether or not that's an appropriate use of, of their funds. But it's not like we're talking, you know, I'm not saying thirty dollars isn't a lot of money to anybody. What I'm saying is, it, I think that you've gotta look at what's the cost associated with the increase over the twelve, twelve hundred and fifty, rather than just the fact that it's before you used to get up to five thousand. Because, yeah, what we're seeing is that the seasonal accounts that are using four and five thousand cubic feet during the course of the summer, and paying a minimum bill of a hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and not using any water for the other, other nine months of the year, the cost of us giving them that water during the three-month period is higher for us than it would be if they were taking it over the twelve months. We have to have that water available twelve months of the year. We have to have the services available twelve months of the year. It's their decision not to use it for nine months of the year. But we've gotta recover the cost. So the question is, do you wanna recover the cost equitably based on what your cost of source is? Or are you gonna spread it out so that, so that there's no conservation effort that's necessary, which is then going to punish the, the year-round resident? Or, because those folks are gonna end up having to see a higher rate?
Now, um...
Let me just ask you this before you go.
Sure.
Has this been proven that this is a concert, has conservation resulted in the, after communities have used this methodology?
Oh, absolutely.
Has conservation resulted?
Yeah, these rates are recommended by the American Waterworks Association. And, you know, I probably have worked in, you know, I've done a hundred and fifty, couple hundred rate studies. And I, I can't think of the last rate study that I completed where we recommended a single-step rate. Most of my studies are recommending no water in the minimum charge, and that you pay for every gal, or pay for every cubic foot. And, you know, this wasn't our first try at the rates that we're proposing. You know, I spent hours with Steve and John going over rates, and we looked at multiple scenarios. And we did look at scenarios where you didn't include any water in the, in the minimum charge. And then we looked at reducing the amount of water in the minimum charge. And, you know, these, the structure is the one that, that they believed was, would best suit the ratepayers here in South Kingston. So, but this is a, a tried and true rate structure. It's an increasing block rate, that means the more you use, the more you pay. I work, I've recommended rates anywhere from two steps, like I am here today, up to four or five steps. But, you know, essentially, you're, you're bedroom seasonal community, you don't have a lot of diversity in consumption, you have some restaurants, you have a few large water takers. But for the most part, you're a residential community, so you don't have, you know, big, big swings in consumption. You don't have anybody that uses, you know, fifty thousand cubic feet per quarter like I do in other communities. So really, a two-step rate is really what would work best.
So I, I have a question, I'm sorry, correct me if I'm wrong. This would impact residential the same way it would impact commercial business?
It does not treat residential any differently from commercial businesses. Everybody's allowed the twelve hundred and fifty cubic feet per quarter, and when they exceed that twelve fifty, they move into the first step, up to twenty-five hundred cubic feet per quarter. When you exceed the twenty-five hundred feet per quarter, you kick into the second step rate, which is three seventy-five. But everybody pays...
So if you have a hotel or a restaurant, which they would, yeah, of course, they would pay more.
Yes. But again, they're gonna be your larger consumers, and they're placing a greater demand on your water system. So by this, with this rate structure, they're gonna be paying their fair share. They're gonna be paying their fair and equitable share. They're requiring you to have, you know, a restaurant might have a one-inch meter. Well, a one-inch meter can flow X number of gallons more than a standard residential meter. Well, that costs you more money. You have to have a larger main that runs to that.
How will this affect, like, for example, South County Hospital or the University of Rhode Island, which, which are very large intake? Would there be, what do you say, a twenty percent increase in their cost, or?
Actually, South County Hospital is on the United Water system, and URI actually has their own source of supply.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I didn't, I don't think they were on the system, but I'm glad John, uh...
That's fine.
John clarified that for me.
Thank you.
But, but to answer your question, if they were on your system, they're a large water user, they're gonna end up paying more. But they're gonna be paying their fair and equitable amount. And fair means that we treat each customer the same, that, you know, oh, hey, your business, so we're gonna, you know, we're gonna charge you two and a half times what we charge the residents. And equitable means that if you use the same amount of water here, you're gonna pay the same amount of water there. And that's the way the rate structure is developed. So nobody's treated unfairly, and again, they're equitable rates. You may not like the number, and you may not think it's equitable, but, but the way they're structured, it is, it's fair and it's equitable. And if you have a, you know, somebody who has a irrigation system and they like a nice green lawn, then that's great, we'll provide them the water, but it's gonna cost you.
Right, like the turf farms.
And it's gonna cost you more than it did prior to this.
Anybody, no, anybody.
It is what it is, golf course.
But this is the way all water rates are going. I do a lot of work in Massachusetts, they haven't mandated step rates yet, but it's coming, and it's gonna happen here, too. At some point in the next, you know, five, ten years, and this is just my opinion, everybody's gonna be on a step rate with an increasing block rate.
Well, it's just like electricity. As much as you use is what you pay for.
Digging a couple of wells in your property.
Well, in the old days, you used to have declining block rates. If you used a tremendous amount of water, you used to get a break. But water is just so expensive today. You can't just pull it out of the ground and send it to people. You can't just pull it out of the ground and send it to people.
Well, thank God we don't live in California right now, because it would even be worse.
Yes, you know, we are blessed in this part of the country with an abundance of water.
Steve, can you tell me that the average year-round household, do they go over in the summer for their usage? Do they go over that 1,250 cubic feet?
Let's take a look at page seven, and I think it can answer some of your questions. Part of Doug's study is an impact analysis. On the impact analysis, it, it looks at different types of users. So as far as the, if you start on page seven, they're looking at a typical year-round resident. There's approximately 300 customers that we have now, they'll pay the $192, okay? You see that first column under minimum? They'll pay $192. Because they didn't go over, they had no excess at all, they would be at the $192. So what is that for a rate increase? It's about 7.8%. Reason 7.8, because 7.8 is the difference between the 178 and the 192. The next group of 175 customers, which are typical year-round, are people that are going to have excess. So they're picking up a $42 excess charge, so their increase runs up to 12.7, and so forth. This analysis looks at each of those different types of bracketing of client base. As you can see, when you look at the seasonals, your seasonals will see a 50% increase from what their current rate is because they get the 5,000 cubic feet that they're not using, and what they're seeing is an increase of $92. Again, the first thousand cubic feet over the minimum is worth $32.50. So, yes, it's, it's a, when you look and you say, oh my goodness, it's up 50%, it's up 50%, but it's under $100. And it's under $100 for the, for the season for somebody to have, have a water resource available for them when we know they're not going to use it for the other nine months of the year, yet we have to provide that service availability. The next grouping...
Can I just ask you, excuse me, when we're looking at the, page seven, and your typical year-round resident, you've got the first box, second, third, and you've got 300 customers, 175 customers, and 30 customers, we've got to have more customers than that, right? I mean, for typical year-round residents?
No, this is the ones that are in this bracketed grouping. We're not going to look at every single customer, this is looking at where the biggest groups were.
Oh, okay, because it looks like that's all we have.
Yeah, no.
I mean, I know that's wrong.
No, if you go to page eight, page eight looks at high consumption year-round residents. So here you've got the people that are taking, you know, taking water use in both the first step and the second step. So now, their normal bill under existing billing practice with no, with the 5,000 is $326. So now they're jumping to $362 under the new rate structure, a 10.8% increase. Your high consumption, which is much higher consumption as far as the volume that they're using, they're using 12,500 cubic feet. That extra 7,500 cubic feet is a 14% increase, they're going to pay $57 more. So you're looking at, what's the cost increase in the different brackets? It's ranging from a low of about 50 bucks to a high of about $100. When you get to the real high consumption people, it's staying at around that 15% because once they get into the second step, it, it's flat, it's $3.75. So the most they're going to see is that $77 increase on what they're currently paying. You get to the next page and we're going to look at the theaters, and you look at apartment units or cottages, and you can see the restaurants right now, the restaurants which would be using a great deal of excess water are going to see their bill go up 23%. But it's because of the volume that they're using. So instead of a bill of $2,862, it would be $3,500, or they'd be picking up 680 dollars, or, you know, over the course of the entire year. So you're talking about, what's that, $50 a month of an increase for the water availability. Trailer parks, you've got the 22 units, they're up 13%. So I, I think this gives you, once you get past page nine, page 10 really doesn't make a lot of difference because that's when you start getting into the one and two meters, and those are the yacht clubs, and we've got a couple with an inch and a half that are private residences, but the only reason you'd have an inch and a half is because you've got irrigation.
What about swimming pools? What does that require? I mean, is that, is that a high water intake?
Swimming pools for the most part are purchased through, through volume discount with a water provider, you know, the tank truck, they would come in and fill it. I don't think many people would fill the swimming pool through a domestic source.
Honestly, so, not when you have a 225,000 gallon pool. You'd have like trucks lined up from here to next week. But I don't think we have, we don't have any pool clubs or municipal pools in this town. I, I know pools, so it's like, you know.
That's what I'm saying, you're not going to, you're not going to fill it up with a garden hose, you're going to have...
No, I had a two-inch pipe. I had a two-inch pipe that filled it up, because we did it through Kent County Water, and it would take...
It must have been one expensive bill.
Oh, well, it was, it was less expensive than getting trucks. Because a truck only holds, a truck only holds 7500 gallons, whereas when you're talking to 225,000 gallons, that's a lot of trucks.
How big was that pool?
A 25-meter.
That's a big pool.
With a diving well that was 15 feet.
Well, we need you as a customer, as long as we can fill it in January.
If you build me, you know, if you build a pool, I'll run it for you.
If you build a pool, he will come. We'll do it in January. But I think that that impact analysis gives you a better perspective on what we're dealing with here. And again, a lot of this increase is directly related to the increased cost of operating that facility. And unfortunately, we're, we're all going to see it. Wakefield Water rates, if those go through with what PUC's got sitting before them, you know, you can see on that sheet that I handed you earlier tonight, this is substantial costs that are there. But again, the quality of the water that we're providing is something we can be proud of.
Now, do you foresee any time in the future where a cost benefit would be, I know we maintain a water system in town, which we went to on our famous bus ride. Do you ever see a time where that would be cost-effective to utilize that?
We're getting closer.
Yeah.
But a water purification plant, which would be necessary at Factory Pond, is still more expensive than the wholesale water that we're purchasing.
But someday it might, that might change.
That's why we've kept the well fields as active.
Yeah, that's good.
And because, and the other thing that we're, we're looking to do is that we've said to the state that we believe that if we opened Factory Pond again, we would be able to push water out of our district as well as take water in. The key to water systems in the future is going to be to have them all interconnected. The problem that you run into with the interconnectivity is the fact that you're taking water out of one resource area into another. But there's a balance, there can be balancing that's done with that. But having the interconnection with our two systems made much more sense than us spending probably two to two and a half million dollars on a purification system. And the operational costs of that, in addition to the capital costs, made the wholesale purchase much, much more of an efficiency.
At this point, but if, if you look at the, like, the worst-case scenarios, I mean, you watch these movies and, you know, you know, there's, there's no water and there's, you know, I'm talking about, you know, not our generation, maybe the next generation, but the following generation, where, you know, there's not going to be water resources. So at that point, there's got to be, I'm sure you guys done a cost analysis of where the break-even point comes, so, yeah, we should, we should look at this, because, you know, it's getting so expensive.
But there's also a separate issue that has to be addressed, and that's the availability of that resource from Factory Pond.
Yeah.
Because what we have to look at is that when we were drawing from there, what we were able to draw at a million gallons a day was drawing a portion of it from the pond itself. So any type of an exhaustive withdrawal there would have impact on the ecology of that area.
Ecology of the pond.
So you, you have to look at it and say, yeah, we could put the facility in, but if we're limited as far as the, the amount of water that could be withdrawn from the system without having adverse impact on it, then we, it may be a case that the balance wouldn't be there for a while longer because your, your capital cost would be there even though we wouldn't be able to pull as much water out.
So it might be, it might be, it might be a, something in concert with...
It's a study that needs, you know, it's a study that needs to be done, and it'll become more of an urgent study based on what PUC does, if, if they go very high.
You don't want to be West Virginia where they're, you know, the water smells like licorice and gets everybody sick.
And the other thing, too, as far as the water fund itself, the water fund's sitting on about, you know, about $1.4 million in retained earnings. A portion of that would be used toward the loop that we want to install. But if in fact we're able to get the grant dollars that are necessary for that loop, we may be able to look at other things as far as that, that resource or the study of Factory Pond. We had a, was it a 10-year or a 15-year deal with United as far as a full, a full purchase requirement?
The 10-year.
It renews on a yearly basis now, but we're past the initial period because they had to pay the cost of the installation, and we had to guarantee that we would continue to buy water. It's our, it's our determination as to whether we keep buying from them, and obviously based on what the cost is. But the other thing I've got to look at is that if I stop buying Wakefield Waters, or United Water, it's going to have an impact on United Water. And when it has an impact on United Water, it could have profound negative impact on my residential base in Wakefield. Everything's, everything's...
Because United went about 10 years without a rate, the rest rate increase they got was January of '12, and they went about 10 years without a rate increase, and that was due to the unanticipated revenue from them buying wholesale water from us.
Basically a symbiotic relationship, everything has to mesh.
That's what I mean, is we, there's so much we have to give thought of when we're coming up with these, with these recommendations, because it, none of it's simple, and everything is not independent. It's, they're all going to have impact on, on different components. You know, one of the things you've got with, with, with South Shore is the fact that we don't charge for fire hydrants. In the, in Wakefield, the United Water pays the fire, the fire districts pay United Water for the hydrants that they have. Hydrant rentals are as much as $2 to $225 per year, per unit. We're providing the fire hydrant at no cost in South Shore and Middlebridge. So that's also part of what is not something that they have to pay as far as their, their fire tax. Unfortunately, they're paying their fire tax on the same rate as the people in Wakefield, where those fire hydrants are being subsidized by United's, United's dollars. But, you know, fire hydrants alone could generate at least another $50,000 to $60,000 of revenue in this system, but it would still be coming out of the other, the other pocket of our residents. So when the town agreed to set up a water system back in 1968, the determination was made that they wouldn't charge on the hydrants because they wanted that to be part of the selling point of unifying, I think there was three different water systems, private water systems that were made into the South Shore system.
Now, when we talk about conservation, I mean, it's all, is it, are we talking like mandatory alternate-day watering of grass? Are we just talking about, it's up to you to conserve water?
We have put in...
You know what I'm saying? I'm just, you know, because, you know, a lot of us have that alternate day during the summer if it's drought or what have you.
We, in conjunction with United and in conjunction with Narragansett on a yearly basis, have put limited use bans on alternating days for, for washing of vehicles or for irrigation purposes. And we do that at the beginning of the season with three systems so that they're uniform as far as our regulation. Is there an enforcement action on that at this point? It's very limited. But what we're trying to do is to create consciousness of the need on, on resource conservation.
As I said, well...
Candidly, I don't want them to stop using the water if I'm getting the revenue that I need to be able to pay for the system. If they don't use the water, you don't have enough money and you have to raise the base rate. So again, it's another one of those...
Double-edged sword.
Well, it's still, but you don't want to run out of water.
But we don't want them to waste the water, and that's really what the, the rates are designed for, that, you know, conservation is a word that's thrown around a lot. You do want people to use water. You don't want people to waste water, but if they're going to use a tremendous amount of water for irrigation and other purposes, then they should pay their fair share. Again, the fair and equitable portion of that.
I'm just looking, I, I'm just, you know, as a science fiction fan, I look to the, I look to the, hopefully not too near future, and say that we're all going to be in trouble someday. There's not going to be, there's not, there's certain commodities just aren't going to be there, you know, and hopefully it'll be long after I'm, you know, floating in the ocean someplace, but, you know.
I think that could close this discussion. I, I think what we were attempting to do tonight, we have accomplished, at least to explain what the objective is, yet at the same time, we're not asking for a, an agreement on the numbers, because I want to do additional analysis as to what my costs are going to be over the next couple of years. If there's anything that the council wants me to look at in addition in terms of restructure, let me know and I'll see whether I can work those numbers up. But again, the percentages are one thing, the cash dollars are another one. We're talking about a, a bill that's averaging, you know, 100, 150, actually, $200 to $200, $250 for the most part of our customer base. We'll look at that, but what we've got to also do is to say, okay, what's the bottom line of the money that we need to generate to be able to continue to pay for the services? And remember, there's not a lot of expense that's put out here. We're talking about an operation that will cost, with capital improvements, about, I think this, the budget that you've got tonight is a million, $57,000. And the, this water system is very fortunate because it's got $245,000 coming from tank rentals, with us having the satellite dishes on, on those units. Imagine if we were coming to you and we had none of the $245,000, $245,000, that is based on the antenna attachments. That would be additional revenue that would be necessary. These water systems are expensive because of their nature, the fact that there's not a lot of water use other than those three months of the year. But because of that, we need to be able to build accordingly. So unless there's other questions, I, I think we've accomplished as far as at least planting the seeds of what the problems are and how we would like to solve them, I think the rate structure has to be based on what, what's being presented in the rate structure. The actual unit values are yet to be determined after we see PUC and capital needs reviewed a little bit closer. The other thing I want to see is, hopefully within two months, we'll know whether the FEMA grant is coming in or the CDVG grant is coming in relative to the, to the loop. That, we're still looking at a $2 million number there that we would have to bond for. Bonding costs alone would put us at another $50,000 to $60,000 a year per million to be able to accommodate that system. So we've got a lot of, we're going to be discussing water in the next six months.
Okay, any final questions here? Jim?
Yeah, how long is our current contract good for our purchases of, from United?
The initial term was 10 years, and then it's renewable every year. It automatically renews unless we...
PUC comes through with that number, that's an automatic number that can flow through to us?
Yeah, once, once the PUC accepts whatever the, the final rates are going to be, I believe it's implemented 30 days thereafter.
But the only thing they're setting for us is the United wholesale rate that we will be purchasing.
And we'll build that every month, so it would happen very quickly.
If that's it, Doug, I thank you for coming down tonight, and it's the first time you've come without snow.
Thank you.
And Doug, on behalf of the town council, thank you and we wish you a safe journey back home.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Our next victim tonight.
Next victim.
I've given you a, a new copy of, I've given you a new copy of the PowerPoint for the audit so that it's on a full page rather than on, two on each page, so that that way you can see the numbers that Trish is going to be addressing a little bit, a little bit closer. As you know, now, now that we've gone over the difficult numbers to talk about, we give the finance director the easy role of talking about how good things have gone.
First, I just want to explain, I've presented you with the PowerPoint just to help you to identify certain areas in the audit as you're going through it. You'll see page numbers and, and things like that and just to identify some important information. The purpose of the audit is to hold the government accountable for how it's spending its taxpayers' money. Management does prepare the financial report for the auditors. It's up to the auditors to perform a selective testing of the financial data and some internal control, making sure, ensuring that our internal controls are in place with certain policies and procedures. At the present time, we're preparing for the 2014 closeout with the new financial system. We've been able to keep up to speed with that and it's been helpful and useful. It gives us real-time review of where we're at. The 2014 audit preparation will begin in August, at which time we have no concerns. The town continues to maintain healthy and stable reserves within all funds, which are reported in the financial statements. The only thing maybe we should take a look at at some point and consider is the school cafeteria fund, which I'll explain later. We continue to fund our capital improvement plans for current and future projects, which is a clear indication of positive financial position of the town, as well as maintaining our internal service funds, which is our OPEB and compensated absences for future liabilities. Obviously, you've done this enough, prudent budget practices are maintained and maintaining the unassigned fund balance is critical in order for us to provide proper cash flow and address any unforeseen conditions not included in your budget and help future, finance future budgets. The tax, the town's tax base continues to trend upward and the collection rate for 2013 is outstanding at 98.5 and we don't expect any changes. Typically, I'd just like to give you a brief introduction. Basically, what I've outlined are just the scope of services and our audit results within the PowerPoint presentation. Financial statements are presented in all material aspects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities in each major fund of the town. The town has received an unmodified opinion on the basic financial statements from our audits. That means there's no concerns. Compliance, compliance audit in accordance with the OMB 133, which is a single audit, is a federal grant activity. They did test major programs within the federal grants and I've outlined three of the ones that they did some major testing on, which is the special ed IDA. That grant was a million, 52,365. Special education is 23,839 and the disaster grant, which is a public assistance grant where they, the presidential declared the disasters, so 405,000. They just basically do some single, single financial testing on those particular grants. They pick out some of the higher ones in the federal grants. They didn't report any material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies were identified and the results of the single audit are reported on page 98 of the financial statements. They are still conducting the agreed-upon procedures for the UCIA for the school department and that is due February 14th. I have not heard an update as of this time.
Uniformed chart of accounts.
Patricia, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
When they looked at the special education, did they look at, you know, any scope of services with quality or was it just looking at dollar amounts?
No, no, I think they, what they do with that is they, they test to make sure, you know, they're, they're reporting their hours spent and their billing process and things like that and timing mostly. If you'd like, I can, I can get some, the scope on those types of audit procedures from our auditors. It's just sample, you know, it's a misconception. A lot of people think they're doing, you know, these big audits and they're really doing random sampling of financial data. They, they test our payables, they test our receivables and then conclude whether or not we're, you know, consistent with our reporting.
I'm all set, I don't need that.
No fraudulent activity or anything like that, so.
Thank you.
But it's not a program audit, it's a financial audit only that, that's conducted here?
No forensics. The statements are organized in such a way where the auditors provide you with their opinion, which was, as I said, unmodified, unqualified. Next section is the management discussion and analysis provides you with just a basic overview of the fiscal year as a whole and certain highlights that, that are identified throughout the financial statements. The government-wide financial statements
Just before you leave on that, that's a nice section for the council to take a look at that and also your, the notes that are there because it'll give you some of the detail that each of the different charts is showing you within the audit as a, you know, if you're not a financial person, that'll give you a much better perspective as to what the condition and status is of the town.
That's the management discussion and analysis?
Right, the, it starts on page four.
Oh, I was going to say, on this, is it page 15? Well, it doesn't matter.
No, the MDNA is, is an actual document that is within your financial statements and it's after the auditor's opinion, the independent auditor's report. The next section is the government-wide, then the fund financials. This is just to give you an overview of how the audit is laid out for you. Budgetary statements, supplementary, supplementary information in the statistical section, which is something that we do internally and is not audited by the auditors. It's just basically a profile of the town over 10 years. Certain components of the financial statements, there are three types of financial statements reported, which I had previously explained. The government-wide provides an overview of the town's finances. Increases and decreases in net position may serve as a useful indicating, indicator of whether the financial position of the town is improving or deteriorating. You continue to increase your net position, you're continuing to grow, which has been historically South Kingstown's trend. So we're in good net position within this town. The fund financial statements are the governmental funds, the proprietary funds and the fiduciary funds. The governmental funds are your general fund. Your proprietary funds are your utility funds, your enterprise funds and your internal control funds, your business type accounts. And the fiduciaries are those funds that we hold as the fiduciary for private, like people that give you grants and, and, you know, probate, probate type funds. They leave funds to the town to act as the custodian.
Within all of those funds is 50 different funds at this point that are being maintained independently through the finance department.
And the third type of financial statements reported are the budgetary, which tells you where you are in any given fiscal year. The governmental-wide funds are reported on pages 17 to 18 and just a few of the highlights, you had an increase, there was an increase in net assets of $4,733,963. There's an increase in unrestricted net assets, $42,109,803. Your long-term obligations are $22,255,750. This is your, your debt and we're in a favorable debt position. And, and next I've given just some net asset trends to see how you've continued to increase, stay profitable, maintain where you are in financial. Governmental fund statements, here is just a quick overview of where you are with your assigned, unassigned fund balance. The general fund for 2013 is at $10,163,758. In 2012, we were at $9,606,650. The school department's unassigned fund balance is $2,957,787 and in 2012, they were
Before we go any further, I do want to mention one thing. When we talk about the $46.8 million that is the end in the governmental accounting, there was a question that came up about three years ago where we had a taxpayer that came forward and said the town has $46 million, they shouldn't be sitting on that much money. There's $46 million that's reported as being ending fund balance. Of that, only $10.1 million is available for spending. The remainder of that 36 million that's out there are monies that are either in capital funds or are funds that are being held in a custodialship. So I want to make sure that it's clear that we're not showing a $46 million undesignated fund balance, that, that is the cumulative, as, as Trish has mentioned, when we look at governmental funds, we're looking at everything being grouped together and looking at it as a net asset and, and seeing the increase. But it's not that those dollars are available for immediate expenditure in any form or fashion.
Steve, forgive me if I'm wrong, I just have another question because when we last met, it was either last council meeting or the meeting before, if we had to send things out to a vote for a bond issue or things of that nature, we're still somewhat well below where we, we, we need to be. So we could put something else out to
Oh, we're extremely below what we would be.
Yeah, because
I mean, for borrowing purposes, you have up to a 3% of what your, your tax base is. Our tax base is over $4 billion, $4 billion. So if you took 3% of that, I think we've only got about $4.3 million that's within the 3% limit. So yes, we have the availability of, of the bonds that we put through the capital improvement program for those to be accepted by the town and integrated into our debt structure.
Okay, thank you. And that's what I understood when I was looking at these, but I know that it was still below what we had discussed at one of our last meetings. Thank you.
Yeah, page 14, Meg will show you, and that's again on the, on the management information. The bottom of 14 shows you what the 3% limit is and says that our debt limit would be $135 million. And at this point, I was, I was wrong, I said 4.3, it's 4.4299,000, so I'm off by $1,000.
That's okay by me, Steve. Thank you.
The next slide is just a breakdown of the components that make up the undesigned fund balance or the unassigned fund balance. Continuing on with the general, the governmental fund statements, you had an increase in total fund balance of $532,718. This is an operating surplus, which is the difference between budget versus GAAP. The general fund had a surplus of $288,148. The school department had a surplus of $98,148 and the non-major governmental fund surplus of $146,422. Just provided a quick note of the budget versus GAAP methodology, which does not account for the use of fund balances. So even though within the 2013 budget, we used approximately $1,002 in undesigned fund balance, that is not considered part of the total general fund surplus because it's, it's a budget versus GAAP analysis. So there are certain things that even though you use as a budgeting tool on the GAAP basis, they don't recognize that within your fiscal year surplus. Steve?
Just for GAAP purposes, GAAP is generally accepted accounting principles.
Just a quick overview of where we were as far as your budgeted surplus. Again, we go back to budget versus GAAP. This particular analysis will show at the bottom, your net change in fund balance was But as I said in the slide before, your actual surplus was only $288,000. Because of that, $1,555,000, you used $1,002 of your undesigned fund balance. The highlights in the general fund area were in the property tax dollars. You had a surplus of $403,897. The current year collections surplus was $339,465. Prior year taxes, you had a surplus of $33,301. Interest on taxes were up $41,759 from what you budgeted. The state aid, you had a surplus of $135,564. And this is basically just the difference between what you budgeted and what we actually received. And I've provided you with the, the budget surpluses within the state aid, the state aid, which are the meal and beverage tax from what you budgeted, you received an extra $96,770. Telephone tax, $23,889. Hotel tax, $13,890. And your chapter 26, your school housing, you received an extra $7,766 from what you budgeted. Your licenses and fees were overall up $290,40. The departmental revenue were up $9,900. I've provided you with all the components that make up that budget surplus. If you would like, we can talk about them or, I think they're self-explanatory. I just wanted to point out the certain, the certain highlights within the financial statements.
Oh, if you move down, I don't know if I'm putting the cart before the horse. Let's move to departmental expenditures. I'd be interested because that's, that's a difference of $356,216. So I, I might be jumping ahead a little bit, so forgive me if I am.
No, that's fine. So you're in the general fund expenditures?
We were on revenues. Were you talking about the revenues or the expenses, Meg?
No, no, it's fine. We can, I was talking about expenditures for the 356. That's okay. I probably jumped ahead a little bit, I apologize.
Well, I, I think the miscellaneous revenue is important to point out because you had received quite a bit of money from the FEMA reimbursements from Hurricane Sandy and the 2013 blizzard, the total of $320,769. I think that's an important thing to note. And we also received a reimbursement for lost wages to public safety personnel that who were out on OJI, injured on duty, of $288,000. who were out on OJI, injured on duty, of $288,109. And it's a program that the trust offers.
Interesting, when our total insurance bill for the general fund is about $125,000.
So this page we just done with the departmental revenues, that's an increase above what we budgeted for, what we...
Exactly. They're just budget surpluses.
Okay. If you could just explain what these numbers are, as we...
Yeah, we budget conservatively.
Like, what's $90,000?
What we're looking at is that when we put the budget together, we're putting it together usually 18 months in advance of some of those revenues coming in.
Right.
And based on economic conditions changing, there may be changes. So we always go very conservatively. And so what you end up with at the end of the year is hopefully you're going to be able to meet the budget number or exceed it. State aid, because state aid has been so uncertain, we've been super conservative as far as not budgeting unless we knew those dollars were going to come in. That's one of the reasons that if it does come in, you've got the money available in fund balance to then be able to use for the following year. So these are all revenues that, this is good news. If we were under with this, it would mean that we were spending more than we were taking in.
So we just have those two deficits, the police department and the recreation self-support program.
Right, and those offset your surplus in the other departments.
Right.
See, one of the things that happened with the police department was a lot of our money for the police department comes through the rental of police vehicles for traffic details. So if there's not a lot of DOT work that's going on, we're going to see less in the course of the year. And that's one of the things that took place with that. Plus, we saw a reduction in the 1213 year on some of the monies that came in from the state for reimbursement on fines, on speeding tickets.
This looks good. What happened with the recreation self-support programs?
Recreation is a self, it's really self-supporting programs. So when you see her budget, she'll say to you, 86% of the programs that we budgeted for actually took place. Well, if those 14% don't occur, then she's not taking in the revenue. So she's got a comparative reduction in her expenditure statement as well. But when we're looking solely at the revenue side of the budget, she's seeing a reduction.
Thank you.
Just going on, just a note is we used $1 million of designated fund balance. Customized practice has been to offset the budget by using your undesigned fund balance. We had some transfers in of $1,329,000, and they were from the fair share development fees for the schools, for recreations, and open space reserve funds. The debt service costs associated with the open space purchase is where the open space reserve funding comes in, to fund your debt service for your open space bonds. And we also received a transfer in from your EMS services reimbursements, your medical billing of $500,000. And that's to offset the tax dollars required for your budget. Moving on to the expenditure highlights, basically what I did is I just used a significant variance of $20,000 in order to just highlight those areas that were either, had a, reported a surplus or a deficit in the fiscal year. The data processing division, they had a surplus of $71,000. The favorable balance was basically a result of a vacant position, as well as some reduced costs for office equipment and software maintenance.
There'll be no more deficits there now that Laurie's here. She won't spend every penny.
We'll be breaking even. Police department had a favorable variance of $120,427. They had a retirement...
There was retirement, and what we ended up with was vacant positions for a longer period of time until the replacement. When Jeff Allen left, we had promotions, but we also had a retirement in December. So you had two slots that were there for a portion of the year.
Streets and Highway, I came in March, so I'm trying to get myself acclimated.
You're doing fine. Don't you worry about a thing.
Well, he's hard to compete with. Just getting myself acclimated. The Streets and Highway budget, they had a favorable balance of $115,498. Again, most of these are related to vacant positions, most of the variances. The tree warden, street lighting, evidently we've spent a lot of money through the storms that we've had cleaning up some of the trees and the debris. Tree removal program deficit was $55,203, and the street lighting was $27,000. Over budget. Recreation department had a $30,491 favorable balance, which is where you see the revenue program in the recreation department. Had a deficit, but then now they're having a surplus on their expenditure side, so in the end, the delta is they had a budget surplus.
Hey, we're under with the revenues that you asked about by 26.5.
Right.
And the budget was down by the 30. So they netted out as a $4,000 to the good.
So they are self-supporting.
Unemployment insurance, favorable variance, and basically maintaining staffing levels. Nobody's on unemployment, collecting unemployment, and that's typical for municipal government. There's not a lot of turnover where people are earning unemployment benefits. FICA, again, surplus in your FICA. Again, that's a result of your vacant positions and same as the retirement. All of those costs are associated with changes in personnel.
These numbers look good.
And one of the other reasons on the FICA was that we were still, we were not taking into consideration in the budget that I developed for the 1213 year, I didn't take into consideration the fact that with the increases in co-pay, that those are not FICA subject. So we were estimating the FICA at a higher rate than when people started paying 20% on a $15,000 item, they were paying $3,000. $3,000 of many of the salaries were not subject to FICA at that point, yet we'd assumed that they would be when we did the general FICA budget.
The next slide is just an overview of the school department and where they resulted at year end. They had a $668,000 budget surplus. And the components that made up their surplus, their expenditures were under budget by $733,000, and they had a revenue shortfall of $65,893. And in their revenue shortfalls, basically it was state aid, Medicaid, and just miscellaneous revenues.
Medicaid is the number that concerns us because going forward, we continue to see erosion in the value of that revenue source. Some of it's directly related to the reduction in what the reimbursement rates are for services that are being rendered, that are coming through the federal reimbursement. But I think that the schools are going to continue to see that go down as a revenue source. It's also a case where, as they reduce the amount of special aid programming that they're providing, that there's going to be less reimbursement for those specialized services.
Slide 20 gives you an overview of your business-type activity funds, which again are your utility accounts, your water, your wastewater, solid waste, the school cafeteria, and your internal service funds. The internal service funds are your OPEB fund and your compensated absences funds. The school cafeteria is one of the funds that I think is of concern for the school committee, and they may need to consider how they want to, what their plan of action is to rid their accumulated deficit in that fund. Its accumulated deficit in the fund is $80,003. So they may need to act on maybe clearing out that deficit.
And what did you say that was? It says unrestricted, is that where we're looking?
That's unrestricted.
And that's called what?
That's the school cafeteria fund, and that's an accumulated deficit in that fund. It's been accumulating for years.
Now, let me ask you this question. Is that a result of costs associated with bringing food in and maintaining all of the programs at the school? Or is it a situation, or maybe both, that people are not paying their fair share? Do we know?
For the most part, I think the deficit is a result of prior contract. The contract that they have now is a break-even contract, so they're not going to lose additional money. The $80,000 has been there. My understanding is that what they did is on the new contract is they assumed responsibility of ownership of the equipment and replacement of the equipment, which then would become a component of their operating budget. What our recommendation has been to the school committee is to take $80,000 out of their fund balance and pay off this fund so that it's in balance. It's embarrassing for us to see any fund in our audit statement that has a negative balance.
So when you're talking about the unassigned fund balance in your governmental funds versus an unrestricted fund balance in your business type, those two are used interchangeably. So your unrestricted fund is similar to an unassigned fund balance in the general fund or in the school department fund. So for your business-type activities, the unrestricted fund for the water is $1,619,379. In other words, it's an unassigned fund balance. In the wastewater division, the unrestricted fund balance is $4,355,636. And in the solid waste division is $1,125,425. And that can be used to offset any unforeseen costs or cash flow issues or budget problems that you are having.
Recognize that some of the reason that we've got, been able to build up those unrestricted balances is because we're funding for depreciation. So what we're doing is we're setting aside money on a yearly basis, assuming that the value of the equipment that's spent during the course of the year. So if you have something that's worth $1 million in equipment, and it's got a 10-year straight life on it, there's $100,000 a year that should be put away so that when that equipment has to be replaced, it's not a spike in your cost of operation.
And you're doing straight line, you're not doing accrued depreciation, you're doing straight line?
Yes, so we would normally use a straight line on, it depends on the size of the asset. Some of it is less than 10 years, some is more. Some of our pipe may go up for 40 years.
The next few slides just tell you the different components of the business-type activity, similar to the governmental wide, which I explained, just changes in the budgetary, budget versus actual. I don't know if you want to go through the increases and decreases of budget surpluses within the business type, but those that occurs.
I think the numbers look good.
Slides of the PowerPoint presentation. Do you want to discuss some, or you can...
Oh, I think for overall, I think the numbers look good.
And again, this is just to point out some of the highlights that are in the audit. On page 24, again, here's some non-major governmental funds, and your non-major governmental funds or your special revenue funds, or your neighborhood guild, your PDB, Peacedale Office Building, elderly services, your emergency billing services fund, and your capital reserve, open space reserve funds. And when we talk about them, again, we can discuss the unassigned or the committed fund balances and the special reserve funds. On page 25, you'll see, basically you'll see the particular components of the fund balances within your special revenue funds. I think an important fund to look at because it does subsidize your general fund is your EMS billing services fund. Fund balance in that fund as of June 30th is $819,220, of which in the 2014 budget, you will be committing $525,000 to your 2014 budget.
And $575,000 in your '15 budget.
If you want to look at how much revenue, the page before, on page 24, you'll see that we've been taking, last year, we took in $810,000 in revenue. We had expenses of $224,000 and an excess of $585,000.
The neighborhood guild, where we are showing somewhat of a loss, $400,947 if I'm not mistaken, is that supplemented in any way by the grant money that we get or the money we...
That's the school trust fund transfer that you receive, which is not considered as part of your revenue source, but it's a transfer into the fund, and it comes from the school funds, the school trust funds.
Are you talking about the elderly services?
No, I was talking about the neighborhood guild, but I know the neighborhood guild is...
Okay, I thought you were looking, because on elderly services, when you see the $346 negative figure, that's before the transfer in from the general fund of the $351,000 in support.
So that's the same methodology. When you're transferring money in, it's reported in a different category, other financing sources.
Perfect.
So the net change in fund balance, I think, is the important line to note. The next slide just basically talks, again, talks about your budget surpluses, deficits, EMS billing service fund, and your open space reserve fund. The revenue received in that is recognized from the real estate conveyance tax. And basically, in conclusion, as an overview, both the general fund and school fund ended with a budget surplus and continue to maintain a strong balance sheet. It is anticipated that a surplus will be recognized in the current fiscal year as well, thus increasing both funds' unassigned fund balance, which should further, should further, the unassigned fund balance will continue to cover further erosion that we may see from the state. What we know, the school department will continue to face a decline in the amount of state aid, education aid annually of approximately $315,000 in 2015, and this is expected over the next six years, and other revenues will be sought, and spending will continue to be monitored and controlled in order to maintain the town's strong financial condition. What is our plan of action? The finance department will continue to monitor all revenues and expenditures to avoid any projected budget deficits, and will recommend an action plan should the need arise. Basically, it's just auditor communications. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here. But what I wanted to point out was that they did not identify any significant deficiencies within our audit. It provided us with an unmodified opinion and no concerns, no management report. We've had a good audit process. None of the misstatements were detected. We didn't have any disagreements within our audit process, and there were no matters discussed where any guidance was needed from an outside party. Process was pretty smooth, and, which was a tough transition, you know, coming in March and a new financial system and the audit taking place, and we've had a lot of turnover in the finance department. So it was a rough year, but it was a good year, so...
It's been interesting.
I will have to say, you know, I'm relatively new myself, but the numbers here look good. I am relatively impressed with what you presented, and congratulations. I am relatively impressed with what you presented, and congratulations to you in your new position because Steve is probably one of the best leaders that have been out there in the entire state. These are strong numbers. These are good numbers. We should have an awful lot to be proud of. The town has an awful lot to be proud of. It really does. And I really mean that. These are good. So just tell... What does that mean, J S A B?
This is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They come up with new pronouncements every year, just in case you're bored. Just in case we have nothing else to do in finance. So basically, they're just telling you that coming up is the financial reporting for pension plans, and that will not have an impact on South Kingstown because we belong to the state. We belong to the ERSRI. But the state will be providing us with just footnote information on pension plans.
That was my question in reading through the comprehensive annual financial report. On Roman numeral six, with the South Kingstown participating in the employment-retirement system in the COLAs, third and fourth paragraph, is it my understanding that there's a court case on the COLAs for the municipal side? And is that going to get resolved soon, and how is that going to affect the budget?
There's no... Anything that's going on with the state as far as the lawsuit that was presented by the unions and the mediated settlement that's been proposed as a settlement agreement will not have impact on the 2015 year. What's going to occur within the first 45 days is a vote by the union membership and the retirees. If a positive vote in favor goes forward, it will then go to the general assembly. General assembly will have to, by September 15th, approve the plan unaltered, or the court case will begin. If there was an agreement on the draft settlement agreement that's been prepared, it would require in the fiscal 2015-16 year, a major change of approximately $400,000 in our debt, in our payment requirements for employer contribution to the three retirement systems that we operate, which would be the police and fire, the general employees, and the school teachers. It would also see probably about a $2 million increase in unfunded liability associated with the police, EMS, and the municipal general employees. But there is not going to be any revisions on the '15 year at this point, but it would have substantial impact on fiscal '16. Concerns that the municipalities have had to date is the fact that we were not at the table in the negotiations when in fact a major portion of the cost concessions that were granted in this draft agreement were to be serviced through the municipal budget process. So it's... We're waiting to see where that whole process takes us. So the COLA is a part of that settlement agreement for the municipal unions, but just as it is with the state employees. But it's all... I think it's... There's either six or seven or possibly eight different retirement systems that are involved, from the judiciary to the state police, to the state employees. So it's comprehensive. It's any of the programs that are independent pension systems that are operated under the state system itself.
Okay. So the systems that we have in South Kingstown that are really funded well, our EMS, police, I believe, was 94%, and the EMS was funded over 100%? Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve.
At one point, it was, Al, but not any longer. Based on the new actuarial assumptions, where there was a reduction in the annual investment yield, down to seven and a half, down from eight and a quarter, and them increasing the retirement age, and also looking at the length that people are collecting. In other words, the average age that you collect to, instead of it being in the 70s, was put to the 80s. The unfunded liability associated with our funds, now I've got us to a collective point where as of June 30 of 2013, we'd be at about, I think it's about an 83% funded ratio. So the three funds would be above 80. One would be below. The police, I believe, would be at about 78%. The proposed settlement agreement would allow COLAs to be instituted every second year if the plans were over 80%, every second year on the first $25,000. So 2% on $25,000 is a $500 cash value, and that would be every other year that the plans were over the 80%. But again, it's a long way to that settlement reaching fruition. And essentially, people lost an annual 3% COLAR in the 2011 modifications that were made to the pension legislation.
Thank you. That was helpful, Steve. Thanks. Any other questions? Seeing none, we truly appreciate, you know, the work that was put into this and, you know, really happy that we got the budget. Before March 1st, Steve, we know that you burnt the candle many, many nights.
We both did.
Maybe your wife is going to have you back soon. I know. And Patricia, thank you. You know, it's been fabulous. So with that said, we do have any other concerns? Matters of interest?
I know we have a lot of meetings coming up. But we have adopting a preliminary budget on March 17th at 5:00. Not the most opportune time to be doing that.
Because you're Irish.
Because I'm Irish, yes. You go out in the afternoon. You don't go out at night. But I know Meg said she's actually going to be away.
Well, no, I don't know if I'm going to be away. I'm supposed to be in St. John.
Supposed to be in St. John.
That's okay.
You're going to Jamaica the next day. Is there any way we can push it? Do we have to have it?
Well, we're at a deadline too, so let's...
Well, put it this way, if you are ready to adopt a budget in advance of that, we can move the schedule up. I mean, right now, I've got three budget schedules plus a fourth one with the school committee that's scheduled. It depends on, you know, if after those meetings are done, you could move it up to the same night that you're meeting with the school committee. If you want me to take a look at that type of scheduling, I can have something when we sit down next week.
Okay. That'd be great. Now, I'm just, you know...
Plus, it's my birthday, too.
I don't ask so much.
I mean, there's only a 20% increase in the budget that we're looking for, so it shouldn't be...
Keep in mind also that this meeting that is being... was held tonight. We talked about having it on May 17th, and we purposely moved it to this night so that later on during the evening, people may go out and socialize. You're showing your age.
It's like a 10-minute meeting.
It's a 10-minute meeting.
If I were to have a long discussion on the 17th, and you ended at the 17th...
It could last 15 minutes.
It's like a 10-minute meeting, that 5 o'clock meeting.
It's a 10-minute meeting. It's a quick meeting.
So we just go out afterwards.
All meetings are short if you're in agreement.
And we have all those work sessions and public hearings prior to, so...
Thank you.
All right.
You did a really nice job tonight, both of you. Thank you.
Good job.
All right. With that said, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
A second. All in favor? Our motion carries. We're officially adjourned at 8:40. Thank you.